Welcome to Market City Commission Agenda Meeting for Monday, February 25th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. Would you please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioner Combenzi.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Brotem Neme.
Here.
And Mayor DePietro.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Commissioner Snyder? Commissioner Ryan?
I would move Commissioner Snyder be, uh, absence be excused.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Combenzi? There's a motion to, and a second to excuse Commissioner Snyder from tonight's meeting. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Note of agenda changes, anybody has any changes to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved.
Thank you. Second? Commissioner Coyne? There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan and second by Commissioner Coyne. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Announcements at this time is, uh, I'll go with, uh, the vacancies on the board. First, the Harbor Advisory Committee, one vacancy. Housen Commission, one vacancy. Local Officers Compensation Commission, three openings. Planning Commission, one vacancy as of three, 19, 2013. Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, one alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, two openings. Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee, Park and Recreation Advisory Board Rep, one vacancy. Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, one vacancy. There is a correction on Agenda Number Seven. City Clerk, would you mind reading that, please?
Yes, Your Honor. This is on the phone system replacement lease agreement. The correction is there was an error in the pricing of the proposed agenda item for the phone system replacement. The Agenda Supplement states that the annual lease and support cost for the recommend, recommended vendor, Zultus, is $27,268 per year. The actual annual lease cost for the system is $2,000, uh, $2,019 per month or $24,228 per year. The lease cost includes the annual $3,040 cost in su, in support cost. It was mistakenly listed as a cost that would need to be paid in addition to the monthly lease cost. The cost for the proposed system, uh, for Zultus by DS Tech would read as follows. Based on a 60-month lease, total purchase cost, $87,550. Lease cost monthly, $2,019. Support cost annual, $3,040. Annual lease and support, $24,224, which the $3,040 is included.
Thank you, City Clerk. With that, we'll have a, uh, presentation by Park and Recreation Advisory Board by Chair Lynn Laskel.
Evening Commissioners. I am Lynn Laxo, Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and prepared a slideshow for our presentation tonight. This is our report to the City Commission of February 25th, 2013. Give you a brief background, established by the City Commission in 2002 with informal powers, duties, and procedures. We advise the Commission on the operation of the park system, Lakeview Arena, and recreation programs, and sets some policy and programs for the Community Services, Parks and Recreation Division. The Board will seek to maximize revenues and use the arena as a skating complex and the marinas within a ballot budget, balanced budget exclusive of capital maintenance and improvement expenses. Our meetings are currently held the first Wednesday of each month at 8:00 AM. We had 16 meetings last year with one cancellation and no unexcused absences. Our current members, and as I observed at an earlier meeting this year, I did encourage our members to come and be recognized, to put some faces with the names. And we have with us tonight Fay Bowers and Amy Conover of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. In addition, we have Keri Gottlieb, who very adequately represents himself from the NoCamanon Trails Network as he is their treasurer. Jackie Likens is the junior hockey representative. John Kirkowski represents the Marquette Schools. Chris, Sarah, and Jim, we're, we're all general representatives. But there is a very diverse group that is on the Board right now. Our staff liaison is Carl. Included in the Marquette City Park System are seven facilities. There are seven parks totaling 2,800 acres. In addition, there are nine baseball fields, three soccer fields, 17 miles of paved trails, six NTN, uh, non-paved trails, and the fit strip. The purpose and goals of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is to guide the implementation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was renewed and approved for, um, from 2011 to 2016. The input of the Citizens Volunteer Advisory Board is to ensure that the recommendations are supported by the community and to meet City Commission-approved policy goals. Now, what you see on here, which I don't expect you to read, but to notice that the colored and colors and shading indicate that we are in 2013 of a five-year plan from 2011 to 2016. And so these charts that are copied from the five-year, uh, master plan show the effort that has already been undertaken towards the goals of the five-year plan. This slide and the slide following it, which I presume are made available to you, only represent the high and medium priority projects of the five-year master plan. Doesn't even include those that are in the low priority. In addition to these accomplishments, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board filled all of its openings. Thank goodness. We've been actively recruiting for quite a while, and we have participants from areas of, uh, in soccer. Uh, and our, some of our new volunteers have interests in universal access as well as general city administration. During this past year, we worked on the Tourist Park Land Use Master Plan, RFP. Uh, we did reviews of the RFP, the proposals, site visits, open houses, and provided recommendations. We've done site visits and recommendations for undeveloped riverside property in the city-owned township parcel. We've deliberated and provided some recommendations on weddings and part, weddings, the permitting of weddings and in parks and beaches. We've conducted a review on the Prescott Isle Playground projects. And we have had a number of opportunities to review and entertain recommendations on areas of citizen interest such as disc golf, a public orchard, the Marquette Access Group, a Harlow Parks Veterans Gazebo, dog parks, and various requests on baseball and Little League facilities. In addition, we participated in the Waterfront Use Master Plan Public Comment and contributed to the submission of the NRPA, the National Recreation and Parks Administration Association, Gold Medal Application. On this page, you'll also see some of the additional accomplishments from the past year. These are the medium, medium priority. In this slide, as compared to the previous slide where it shows a number of projects in progress with our high priority programs, which tend to be longer term and tend to be installed in phases. Some of our medium priority issues have already been completed, which is indicated in the yellow on this chart. Some of the new challenges that we are facing are not necessarily that new, but the loss of revenue sharing over the past few years is a reduction of about a million dollars in the last 10 years per year, and the personal property tax losses are another half a mil. We have among the various projects of the five-year master plan, over $6 million in, uh, in prioritized projects to accomplish. So among our goals for the upcoming year is to continue to refine the priorities for the master plan actions. We've had a great deal of debate and discussion about cost recovery policies and the supporting fee structures that maintain the, the cost recovery, developing policies and supporting the policies once, once implemented. Uh, our capital improvement plan and continuing to evaluate and endorse ideas important to the residents. Of course, we wish to support the Regional Recreation Authority discussions and look forward to the implementation of their business plan to be able to maintain their momentum going forward. Additional issues and discussions, our cost recovery policy discuss, discussions have been of heated debate. And as the Commission entertains the various figures from the budget this year, as they see fit, the, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board stands ready to help identify and prioritize among the different projects what levels of subsidy they find that it is important for the city to support. Other issues including the impact of the city role in programming. It was identified as a shortcoming on our application for the gold medal status with the NRPA. And there was a time in the past where the city had an active role in providing the programs for recreation of the city residents. And it has over time, because of our robust user groups, been delegated. And, and this is apparently not a, not a best practice among current gold medal status applicants. So something that we are planning on discussing and considering. In addition, the insufficient funding of operations may be mitigated by pricing policies for cost recovery. In addition to the abandonment of facilities, we have to plan in, in, in future for abatement and recognize, um, the term of useful life of facilities and the ongoing issue of facility use by non-residents. We have already begun and continue to work on policy guidelines for proposed structures in parks so that they can be facilitated but come with engineered plans and specifications for meeting universal access and other requirements in a predetermined manner that is suitable for acceptance by the city. Among our continuing areas of interest is the preservation of public shoreline. And the Advisory Board was very happy to hear about the proposal for the new Clark Park and the opportunity to provide that, that much additional shoreline as a city park. And we're watching very carefully to see how that progresses. The Prescott Isle Park Harbor and Marina Maintenance and Improvements. It's a multi-phase project to update the marina, and that continues to move forward. The Hartwood Forest Land Authority and the Regional Recreation Authority are both continuing areas of interest. And as with you and other citizens of the city, promotion of Marquette as a year-round destination. And that's my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you. That's very interesting. Now Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Combenzi?
I guess I, I have a few. I was a child who participated first in the, the city programs that they used to run at the parks. I went to Harlow Park. And is that what you're talking about, that kind of programming? Or is it?
In addition to, you know, day-use facilities or programs with, with, with children, there were also organized groups like soccer, baseball, softball, Little League, uh, different, different, more organized activities. I was not a child growing up in Marquette. And, uh, and so I'm not familiar with a lot of the programs. I'm going on memory from the discussions that we've had in, in the Advisory Board. And more study is needed really to see what the criteria and guidelines are among NRPA applicants and see what those benchmarks are that they're actually looking, um, looking to see in, coming from a Marquette application, for example, for a gold medal status, but to see what the, the, uh, the current gold standard is.
The other questions I have, cost recovery and fee structures. When, when would those come to the City Commission? I know previously when some of this has come up, there, there wasn't enough leg time to warn some of the renters or patrons of our facilities. I don't know if...
What we're talking about in terms of setting policy and what we would like to, uh, be a part of assisting the Commission in deciding is where the prioritization of subsidy of city funding should go in the various parks and recreation opportunities that we have. We have many. The, probably the best analogy that, that I can relay, I received, Carl has demonstrated, is there's a pyramid. And at the top, there are very few users that benefit from a particular service provided by the city. And spreading broadly at the bottom, there are a vast number of users that can benefit from a service. So for example, trails and beaches and things that are wide open to public use tend to be at the bottom. And at what level of subsidy does the city feel it should, um, contribute to their promotion and maintenance, upkeep, development? At the top, where there are few users, what is the burden that the city should pay as compared to what the, the, the specific users of that service should pay? For example, ice in the Lakeview Arena. So, um, you know, every, every service has a public component. Ice in the Lakeview Arena also has public skating times. But is it a, a unique resource? Are there other resources available and so on? Need to be compared to the very limited budget that we have available. And so what the Parks and Rec Advisory Board hopes to do is to help identify where each of these services fall within that pyramid, um, in terms of setting policy, to say that we acknowledge that we have, you know, these different kinds of services, and we feel that, you know, these ones are the broadest, have the broadest use, and these have the narrowest use. And what should be a target, not necessarily an, an immediate change in the cost and pricing, but what should be the target goal for, um, user contribution to the costs of those services as compared to the city contribution?
And then the last question I have, nine baseball fields. I drive by there a lot and I don't see them in use a lot. And I know, I don't know if there's been any discussion on your committee about, should we keep nine? Um, I know there's a lot of tennis courts too that don't get used. Some get used quite often, some don't at all. In fact, there's some at Sandy Knoll where I think the public schools don't know if they own them or not. They don't know if they're city, if they're public schools. And within that question, I guess, have you looked at, are you looking at how many we need to service? What the preferred use of what sport is?
There are, um, some benchmarks that Carl has shared with us in terms of population density and the number of fields that you might need, for example. However, um, we are also in a unique position in that we have user groups such as Superior Land Soccer that use fields both in the city of Marquette and outside the city limits. And so this is where the Regional Recreation Authority discussions really best come into play in terms of the collective pool of resources available across the, the three municipalities, the townships and, and, and the city. And, um, and so just looking at what Marquette itself has, um, might not be sufficient, but when you add in the, uh, the, the additional facilities in the surrounding area or the use of our facilities by participants outside of the city limits, it, it tends to be more of where those, the assessment of those numbers come. The other issue with, um, with facilities that are constrained by the number of participants that can use them at one time is that you have a peak time. So softball and baseball fields will be most busy, you know, in the evenings when parents can shuttle their kids to practices or games or whenever and there, or, or any competitive sport. Scheduling tends to have certain key hours where they're very busy, and then the peak demand falls off sharply outside of those hours simply because it's not convenient for the users. So, and I certainly understand your, your feeling that they appear to be vacant a great deal of the time. And so it tends to be a feast or famine thing. At the time that everybody wants to use them, everybody wants to use them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Combenzi. Commissioners Stonehouse?
A couple of quick ones if I can. First one really directed, I think, sta, towards staff rather than to, to the briefer. But, um, when we talk about the issues of, of policy recommendations for different aspects of recreation or cost recovery or related data, uh, really that material should be built in, I believe, to the departmental budget before that budget comes forward to the committee or to the Commission. So really, that's the process that would be used to be internal to the department. And then again, that comes up and then we're able to go through it at that point. Uh, the other item that struck me was you had two items, or twice talked about marinas within your presentation. That seems to be a little bit of cross-purpose with the Harbor Advisory Committee. And I'm, I'm curious as to how that, that happened.
For the most part, we don't have a direct representative on the Harbor Advisory Committee. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has been participating in the, um, in the overall grant review process for, uh, some of the, the grant monies that are being used for the marinas. But the marinas themselves are part of city facilities and the parks. So we rely primarily on our staff liaison for the information to go across those two committees.
Uh, I just remember back maybe seven or eight years ago, and Commissioner Coyne, I believe you were on the Commission at the time, when the prior administration had managed to take the Harbor Advisory Committee and put it under the Prescott, or the Parks and Recreation. And of course, that was a total conglomerate mass of, of seething nothing. Uh, so the Commission was able to extract it at that point. I'll go back seven or eight years ago. So my concern is, are we somehow seeing that happen again? Because I see these as two separate actions. And, uh, again, that's my opinion on the matter, and perhaps, uh, staff can best work with the committee to, to see how that all fits together. Not saying that coordination should not occur, but, um, that wasn't what I was getting from the briefing. So, thank you.
Any other Commissioner at this time? Commissioner Ryan?
Just very quickly, and I, I forgot the four initials of the people that didn't give us the gold medal, but what was the group called?
NRPA.
NRPA.
National Recreation and Parks Association.
How, how important is that we, that we get that designation? And does it mean anything in the, in the end?
It is, I believe, a reflection of the, um, the city's support and the community's interest in the natural resources that we have here and how we make use of them. I think that by qualifying or, you know, even considering ourselves worthy of submitting the application for a gold medal is an important feather in one's cap when evaluating the city's offerings. And the award of such a distinction would be an important tourism marketing point for, uh, for, in addition to the events that are already, uh, well populated, popu, popularized, you might say.
I guess I would argue that, that I think we do pretty well the way we're doing it today. As you, you used the word robust, I think, uh, groups that are working on it. I think they can probably do it better than the city could. You know, and, and with a lot more commitment and emotion and devotion. And I think with the city providing the kind of facilities we provide and the groups, the, you know, youth sports groups and, and the Caymanon groups and all the other organizations that work on recreation, boy, I would hold us up to anybody as far as getting the job done here. So if they don't recognize us, I guess that's their loss.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other Commissioner at this time? Seeing none, thank you for a great presentation. That was very excellent. Thank you and your staff again. At this time, we'll move to Number Two, Proclamation, Marquette Community Entrepreneurs Week. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas Market Community Entrepreneurs Week is an annual event held to renew our commitment to supporting our community's entrepreneurs and celebrate their creativity, hard work ethic, and their willingness to take risk. And whereas during Market Community Entrepreneurs Week, we intend to bring entrepreneurs' volabilities together to work to make their communities a better place to live. And whereas Marquette Community Entrepreneurs Week showcases contributions made by the entrepreneur as well as recognizing, understanding, and honoring the creative spirit of an entrepreneur. Now therefore, I, Johnny DePietro, Mayor of the City of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the last week of February as the Marquette, as Marquette Community Entrepreneurs Week in the City of Marquette dated this 25th day of February, 2013, and sign, Johnny DePietro, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. With that, we'll move to appointments. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, there's one appointment this evening. Carolyn Craig to the Board of Review for a term ending, uh, February 1st, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we appoint Carolyn Craig to the Board of Review for a term ending, uh, February 1st, 2016.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan?
Good to have a qualified and willing representative step forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Exactly the same.
Any other Commissioners? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Reappointments, uh, City Clerk, uh, Commissioner Neme?
City Clerk want to read it or, does City Clerk want to read it first?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where I'm going with this.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we have one reappointment for this evening. Jeremy Pickney, Pickens, City Appointee to the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority for a term ending, ending May 1st, 2016.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Coyne? Thank you.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Neme? Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Neme?
Just like to thank Mr. Pickens for being willing to volunteer to serve the city once again.
Any other Commissioner? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. With that, we'll move to, uh, public comment. Comment may na, may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comment. Citizen may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in item being moved up on agenda at the mayor's description. Anybody wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone ready to address the Commission at this time?
Mr. Mayor, uh, my name is Bill Sanders. I live at 105 Country Lane, Green Garden, and I'm here to represent Michelle Butler tonight. We're obviously going to give you folks written documentation and detailed proposal information about, uh, what she spoke about here at your last meeting. But, uh, as we're putting that together in the coming days, I wanted to take the opportunity to at least, you know, give you some informal, uh, update on what we've been up to since, uh, she was here last. Um, we've had a lot of great input from your staff, uh, in the format of how we put this together for you to, um, get your initial look at the details of her proposal. Um, we're working on deed preparation, mineral rights research. Uh, we've had many conversations, um, with the trust fund staff who we are intending to, uh, use as a fund source for the land acquisition, which is obviously the first step in, uh, building the new park. Uh, feedback has been excellent from them, and I think they recognize the, uh, signature nature of a project like this. of a project like this. In general terms though, I mean, I'm sure everyone is pretty familiar with this trust fund board, but where this is aiming is that the fund source, probably 75%, 74% of the acquisition will come from the trust fund program. And those funds are generated by income on investment of mineral rights from the state of Michigan. So it's not a tax-based fund source in any way. The match will come entirely from Michelle and her family in that what we'll do is we'll actually deduct 25% of the value of the land as in-kind match. And the nuts and bolts of how the actual land transfer occurs is what we're working with trust fund now on to make sure we got that right. Because things like incidental closing costs, those sorts of things, the seller can waive the payment of those. Things like the appraisal and the environmental assessment, those are things that will be done as in-kind match through their payment of those items. So we're working through all those details, you know, it'll be part of the grant package and I just really want to make sure you folks knew we haven't forgotten about that offer and that we're working busily to get something formal in front of you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Dave Wigan, 350 Brookton Road. I'm a township resident, but I'm here regarding 400 Radisson Drive land division problem. And I brought it to your attention at the last meeting and I had hoped it would have been an agenda item on this meeting. I'm disappointed to see that it's not. But once again, we have not had a land division policy in the City of Marquette since September and it's six months now. And the best I can get for an answer is that it's going to be late spring to early summer before there's a policy set. That just seems like an awful long time to put together what it's got to be a pretty boilerplate policy for review by the commission. And I don't know why that we have to wait that long. At the rate it's going, it's going to be the better part of a year before we have a policy that allows the residents and the taxpayers in this city to do a land division. That seems like an unreasonable amount of time. And I would, once again, ask city commissioners to pay some attention to it and the best I can get out of an answer out of the assessor's office and the finance office, which is apparently her supervisor, is that there is no policy and maybe it'll be late spring to early summer. Just seems we should be a little more definitive at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Thank you. Frank Cheferdo, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to reserve time on item nine. These are my opinions. February 11th, we witnessed the most extraordinary event this chamber has seen in over a decade, the bestowment of 14 acres to our lakeshore on both sides of the boulevard. You'll recall that at one time, 80-foot-high condominiums were proposed on the inland portion. Ironically, that hideous power plant probably spared us the viability of that land use. Then widespread rumors surfaced of a fancy resort whose confines would extend to the lake, thus interrupting the boulevard. It's one of the rare times I spoke on the commission's behalf that there was never a shred of evidence to suggest this possibility. Of concern now is the end result. On the inland portion, we must consider the donors' wishes so long as we keep the lake portion natural. February 11th, Mr. Schneider added pedestrian safety to the agenda. Please let us make such additions prior to the agenda's publication to give the public a due opportunity to prepare. And where is this item on tonight's agenda? Mr. Ryan mentioned needing more information, so please tell us where we stand on this important matter. For years, this board was urged to post signage or to otherwise improve safety at our two main downtown intersections, alerting motorists to the danger that pedestrians face. Joe Levy addressed this concern, yet the request for further action was ignored. Instead, this board literally awaits further injury similar to your ongoing situation at Pitnik Rocks. Even a walker like me agrees with Mr. DePietro that stopping traffic flow any time a pedestrian sets foot in a non-controlled sidewalk or crosswalk is impractical, especially with gas approaching $4 a gallon. Here's a case where a great sounding idea would more likely exacerbate hazards for pedestrians and vehicles alike. Regarding the new ice sore that juts into the boulevard curve at Pitnik Rocks, the ramifications of your negligence continue to generate fresh public complaints after this board lifted narrowly an area finger in 13 years to avert this imminent finality. The same attitude that led to drowning across the road and the substandard Commons Ice Rink. In all cases, public testimony warned this board of lost opportunity in a timely manner that the members chose to ignore the advice despite what we now know were worthy concerns. These actions on top of the blocked roundabout all resulted from outlandish lacks of vision. The scary part is a majority of you don't even care to acquire the art of vision despite it being an integral component of your chosen responsibilities. In closing comment, you'll learn that Olmsted's visionary principles apply to all landscapes from natural to urban. It amounts to the consideration of adjacent land uses, in different words, but fundamentally the same thing. Nevertheless, we're stuck with the blocked roundabout view and your new ice sore on Lakeshore Boulevard, oversights that must never occur in the civilized world, not in this or any day and age.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Bob Kembensee, 306 North Sixth Street. I just want to reemphasize what Mr. Wigan said tonight. You received an email from me last Friday. I have two clients that are waiting for the same action to take place. One since last November and one since about a week and a half ago. So, you know, it's an item that I think needs your consideration as soon as possible and I don't think it needs to be made, you know, any more complicated. It doesn't need to be complicated unless you want to make it that. So, like I said in the email, let's get it done.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Move to consent agenda. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the minutes, item A, approve the minutes of the February 11, 2013 city commission meeting and item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $277,963.96.
Thank you, City Clerk. Is there a motion? Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda to approve.
Is there a second? Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Ryan?
Very routine.
Commissioner Coyne? Any other commissioner? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Under new business, number five, Central UP Food Hub. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the Central UP Food Hub seeks to build and maintain a healthy, sustainable local food system in Michigan's central Upper Peninsula that is accessible to everyone via advocacy and lasting policy change. The Marquette Food Co-op is the designated agent and requests that the City of Marquette appoint at least one representative to both the policy and steering committees of the Central UP Food Hub, excuse me, as supported by the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. It is hoped that this effort will inform local policies relative to agriculture and food production as well as research, as well as research best practices from around the country with the intent to educate governing bodies about the integration of agriculture into zoning and land use policies. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, consider appointing one city representative to the policy and steering committees of the Central UP Food Hub. Alternatives, do not appoint a city representative to this group or as determined by the commission.
City representative? Anybody from city commission wishing to? Commissioner Coyne?
I'm not wishing to volunteer myself, but I would like to nominate Jason Snyder for consideration. And if any other commissioner wishes to do so, I'd certainly enjoy, you know, discussion and...
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second that recommendation. I know that Jason has attended several training sessions on regional food and its applicability to us. I think he would be a good representative.
Thank you. Commissioners, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other comment? Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Motion by Commissioner Coyne, second by Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan, you have anything?
No, I was just going to ask a question or two before we got to this point, but I guess we're beyond that, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My question was, does this have to be a city commission person or can anyone serve in this capacity or?
Commissioner, city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. This doesn't have to be city commissioner other than that it's a policy formulating board and traditionally the commission has been the policy body, staff has been the implementers. It would be, as part of our recommendation, intended that staff would provide support to any commissioner who's nominated.
And I guess, you know, just to follow up on that, what responsibility does this place on that person and on the city itself?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a representative from the Marquette Food Co-op here this evening who can explain the food hub concept and hopefully provide some insight into what the expectations would be.
Did you want them to address?
It's fine with me, sure.
Would you like to come up here and?
From the food hub perspective here in the Central UP, the policy committee, as read by the clerk, it's made up of several different, it is an open committee, so your question, does it have to be a commissioner? No, it doesn't have to be a commissioner. It would be very nice if the commissioners were represented to learn so Jason or whomever actually fills that role can come back and supply information. Currently, on that committee, the policy committee, there is township planners, county planners. It would be very nice if the city was represented and if a commissioner was there, as the city manager mentioned, we'd also be able to have a staff member supporting that commissioner. And I do feel since the food hub will be located right here in the City of Marquette that it would be nice to have that city representation. The city's been incredibly supportive of local food efforts and I think having that representation on the committee is important. And really, the policy committee is going to research and be able to provide education to the city about issues surrounding food and agriculture. So again, it's a way to raise awareness and to keep you all informed about what's going on.
Sure, go ahead.
All I'm saying is I have no objection to Jason. I think he would be a wonderful representative. I just, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing by appointing a commissioner. I mean, we typically have not done this, and I don't know what, you know, responsibility that places upon them. Are they representing the city? Are they representing themselves? I don't know if the city attorney has any thoughts here. This is not something we typically have done. I'm not aware of it in my time.
Right, it doesn't happen very often. Certainly, if a commissioner is appointed, he can't take any action and bind the city in any way. So I guess in a way he's representing himself, but I'm assuming he's going to come back to the commission with certain, you know, ideas and perhaps policy initiatives that he might want the commission to get involved in, but he can't act on behalf of the commission in this capacity.
Okay.
City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. This, to the best of my knowledge, would be the third time a request like this has come before the commission. The first one is when they chose to appoint Commissioner Stonehouse to be the representative to the Michigan Ports Collaborative. The second one was when, again, Commissioner Stonehouse volunteered to be appointed to the County Road 595 corridor study group. And we anticipate that participation in this group, particularly since the city earlier provided support both to the Marquette Food Co-op's application to be the pilot for the M-Dard Food Hub as well as granting the relief from taxes for the facility they're proposing to use for this signaled that the commission supported this initiative. Certainly if they wanted staff to attend, staff could do that, but generally speaking, we try not to step into the shoes of the commission when it comes to potential policy discussion.
The only, the only thing I'd say, I don't think the County Road 595 was a policymaking board. This was just a study committee, so. Anyway, I'm not making a big issue of this. I just laid it out there for what it's worth, that's all.
May I make a comment?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I kind of agree with Commissioner Ryan. I think that, I think it's fine. I think Jason did a great job and I think Jason would be interested in doing this service, but I think it's also important that we have a staff, a staff person, not just supporting the commission, but actually serving on this, on behalf of the city because I think this is an important thing for the city and the staff is going to be here hopefully longer than any of the individual commissioners and that would add continuity and also provide the, I think, the resources that an individual commissioner might not be able to contribute on their own time, so.
May I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Just so everyone's clear, the name Policy Committee does not mean that this body has any authority to make policy and put it upon any entity out there. The word Policy Committee or the name is to take a look at existing policies, examine them, their current effects, their potential effects, and then really to gather research and information so that we can inform the commission and other entities about what's happening and what could happen. So again, when you're wondering about the commissioner's role, certainly they're not going to be representing the commission and making any decisions or acting on behalf of the commission. It's more that we very much want to keep the commission closely informed about what's going on because as you've heard me talk many times in front of the commission, local food is a really big issue and it's only going to get bigger. So just as a courtesy, we would really like to keep you informed on that level and certainly would love to have a staff member as well. And obviously, it's up to the commission whether you feel a commissioner should be appointed or not, but whatever city representation that we can get would be most appreciated.
Commissioner Amy? Commissioner Kembensee?
I think it would be important to have a staff member as well. If we're going to appoint a commissioner, I would, I'd feel most comfortable if we had a place for a staff member too.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I didn't pick commissioner's name out of a hat, Commissioner Jason's name out of a hat. I think he's, to me, the logical person who's been the driving person to get us interested in this and the support. I don't, and I, I can't offhand pick a city staff person that has been equally enthusiastic. I would ask the city manager, do you have a person who's a staff person that would be an appropriate representative?
We certainly would find one, sir.
Well, then could I then go further? You're asking for one representative, not two.
That would be fine.
What would be fine?
I mean, one representative would be great. It would be nice to have an alternate as well, if that's possible, but again...
Okay. Well, thank you. Go back. The motion is for Jason. It could be amended to Jason and an alternate to be selected by the city manager. I don't feel competent to start selecting people, nor is it my role to do that. And I put that out for discussion of an amendment to it.
I think that's an excellent comment. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wouldn't have anything further to add. I started out saying it would be our intention to have staff support the policy representative if, whether we're a full-blown member of the, of that group or not, we would do that and so we would welcome any chance to support the commission as they saw fit.
I believe Commissioner Coyne's thought is to have an alternate designated by our city manager. Is that correct? Commissioner Coyne?
Yes, it is. And I, can I amend my motion to reflect that?
If you can get a support, yeah.
Yes, he does have support from... Yes, he does have support from Commissioner... Okay.
We'll vote on the amendment first.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Ryan will support that amendment. City Clerk, did you want to read that back to us?
Yes, Your Honor. The original motion that was in place is pretty well set, but I think the amendment is to... It was moved by Commissioner Coyne, supported by Commissioner Ryan, to authorize the city manager to appoint a city staffer to be alternate to this Policy and Steering Committee of the Central UP Food Hub.
Do you agree with that, Commissioner Coyne?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan? Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, second by Commissioner Ryan.
Point of order, are we voting on the amendment or the motion?
Yes, it's on the amendment at this time.
Just to be aware of that, Your Honor.
Right. All in favor on this amendment, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero.
Now, you're going to take a vote on the original motion as amended?
City Manager?
We need another vote on that.
Did you have anything?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. We'll vote now on the original motion. As amended. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Number six, reporting recommendation from City Manager, plotter replacement lease agreement. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the engineering department uses two large-format plotters to print construction plans, GIS drawings, and maps. In addition, other city departments, boards, and commissions depend on these plotters for their drawing needs. The plotters are 12 years old. One of them is no longer operational, and replacement parts are no longer available. Both plotters are used extensively during winter months, and the loss of one device can result in lost productivity during these periods of heavy use. Three companies submitted bids for a new plotter on a 36-month lease schedule according to the requirements of the bid request, and FRV Incorporated submitted the lowest bid for a 36-month lease with a bid of $316.39 per month, or $3,796.68 annually, as shown on the attached cost summary. Fiscal effect, the lease cost to replace the plotter is in the current budget, and the new lease will utilize existing funding. Recommendation, approve a contract with FRV Incorporated for a three-year lease in the amount of $316.39 per month to replace a plotter in the engineering department. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioner, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve a contract with FRV Inc. for a three-year lease in the amount of $316.39 a month to replace the plotter in the engineering department.
Commissioner Ryan?
Support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further?
Only that it's a critical piece of equipment for us, and this was the low bidder.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
And it's needed and within the budget, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Kevancy?
Does this include service? Yes, it does.
She said, yes, it does. Do you have anything further? Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. At the end of the lease period, do we own the plotter, or do we just go and lease a different one?
We have the option, not to own it, but we could buy it at the fair market value, or we can extend the lease, or go out and get a new lease.
So, there's a lease with the option to buy. Okay.
Any other commissioner, further discussion on this? Seen none? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. We'll now move to number seven,
reporting recommendation from City Manager on phone system replacement lease agreement. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Keep in mind that in reading this particular agenda cover, it'll be modified for the amended numbers based on the earlier item that was read under announcements. Background, the city's telephone system was leased for a five-year term and expires in March 2013. While there are options with the present lease, either to extend the lease or to purchase it outright, staff wanted to compare other systems that would reduce total cost of ownership without sacrificing features and functionality. An RFP was released for a citywide system replacement containing similar features and capabilities as the existing system. Of the six proposals returned, three companies were invited to demonstrate their systems based on total cost, technical merit, and technical support, among other criteria. All of the proposed solutions offer the same or similar telephone system features and functionality. However, staff believes the Zultus system proposed by DS Tech provides the flexibility and functionality to support the city over the long term and at a lower cost for the following reasons. The lease and support costs for the Zultus system are one-half the cost of the existing system. The system is designed to use newer technologies, SIP, and open standards, rather than older, more costly protocols like T-1, which allows more efficient use of resources at reduced cost. And configuration changes can be made in-house, further reducing support costs, and technical support is available locally. Fiscal effect, the annual lease cost for the current telephone system is $58,847 in the current budget, and the new lease will reduce this cost to $24,228 with an anticipated implementation date of July 1, 2013. Proposed solution costs are attached. Recommendation, authorize the city manager or his designee to sign a multi-year lease agreement with DS Tech Incorporated for a replacement telephone system in an amount not to exceed $24,228 per year. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioner, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we authorize the city manager or his designee to sign a multi-year lease agreement with DS Tech Incorporated for a replacement telephone system in an amount not to exceed $24,228 per year.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Commissioner Naimi?
Well, I think this is obviously an essential service needed by the city, and I commend staff for obtaining this at much less cost than currently experienced.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I wonder if the city manager can talk about the differences between this lease and our existing lease, at least in terms of monetary differences. I know we're saving a considerable amount of money with this lease, if you can speak to that.
No, the trends in the telecommunications and IT market continue to be very favorable. We've seen this already with the bulk bandwidth savings that we've accomplished. This is yet one more step in trying to realize the most efficient services possible. The nice thing in the U.S. marketplace is that there's a lot of innovation, and that innovation drives greater and quicker obsolescence in technology. And so, shortening down the lease periods to try to take advantage not only of newer technology, but cheaper and more ubiquitous availability is really the path we've been on now for two years, and we're continuing to see the financial results of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
The bid is not the lowest bid. There are two bids lower, although they're all in the same ballpark. But I wonder if the manager could comment, or someone, on what the significant differences are that... I think anytime we don't take the low bid, we should have, you know, a good idea of why it is we're not.
I'm going to pinch-hit here for Dan Fredericksen, our IT director. He could speak to you a little bit more about this, but primarily, it was the technology platform. Zultus offered a newer platform that is designed to work with the SIP system. Also, the administrative flexibility that it would give to the IT department to make changes. Our IT staff felt very strongly this was the most user-friendly option for them. All of the systems offered similar features in terms of telephone service, so it was basically on those two issues that they made the decision.
Anything else, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Any other commissioner? Seen none. There's a motion by Commissioner Naimi, second by Commissioner Stonehouse. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. We'll move to number eight, reporting recommendation from City Manager. Marina annual slip rates. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, the city of Marquette maintains two Granton-Aid Marinas, Cinder Pond and Presque Isle. Each Marina facility was developed using state and federal funds that equate to 50% and 90%, respectively. In 2011, the Waterways Commission established a 10-step rate schedule. Granton-Aid facilities were required to schedule rates, which are approved by the MDNR. The steps offered greater flexibility when choosing rates to meet local financial obligations. The city of Marquette Marina Fund is an enterprise account, i.e., established to be self-sustaining, that is funded through seasonal slip rental, transient slip rental, fuel sales, pump-out, and annual and daily launch fees. For a variety of reasons, the general fund had subsidized Marina operations starting in 1994, when the Cinder Pond Marina... 1994, when the Cinder Pond Marina was commissioned. Rates historically have not incorporated planned maintenance and depreciation needs. City Staff and Harbor Advisory Committee, or HAC, held several discussions during 2011 regarding the rate options. As a result, all parties recommended pursuing a long-range, multi-year strategy for addressing self-sustaining fund requirements, i.e., annual operating costs plus depreciation. That gradually... And would gradually balance slip fee increases with diminishing reliance on general fund subsidies. HAC recommended an increase of slip release rates of 6% per year for five years. Staff later analyzed the recommendation and determined that a revenue-neutral, i.e., break-even point, would require seven years. This is the third year of the planned increases. Other rates that were reviewed include transient rates, Founder's Landing Boardwalk, winter storage, and annual launch and daily seasonal permits. As recommended, Cinder Pond Marina established transient D and applied transient C rates to the Presque Isle Marina, and applied Cinder Pond Marina seasonal slip rates to Founder's Landing mooring sites, increased winter storage rates consistent with the market study, and there's no charge is recommended to launch fee permits. The following outlines the coordinated recommendation for the 2013 boating season. Seasonal slip rates at the Cinder Pond and Presque Isle Marina, 6% above 2012 rates, mooring field, $362 for an annual fee, Founder's Landing Boardwalk rate, Cinder Pond rate without utilities, transient rates, Cinder Pond Marina, transient D, Presque Isle Marina, transient rate C, pump-outs TBD, or the HAC is to review at their March 2013 scheduled meeting. Seasonal launch rates, no increase, daily launch rates, no increase, and winter storage rate, $1 per square foot. Detailed MDNR waterways fee information is provided as an attachment. Fiscal effects, the continuation of 6% annual increase to slip rates will achieve a revenue-neutral, sustainable balance in the Marina Fund by fiscal year 2018. Recommendation, approve the recommendation to increase the seasonal slip rates by 6%, transient slip D rate at Cinder Pond Marina, and transient slip C rate at Presque Isle Marina, increase winter storage to $1 per square foot, and make no change to other Marina rates as proposed. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Before we begin this discussion, I'm going to reclusive myself, because I am a habitual slip renter at Cinder Pond. So, I will take no vote. I will take no part in discussion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
I move we approve the recommendations to increase the seasonal slip rates by 6%, transient slip D rate at the Cinder Pond Marina, and transient slip C rate at Presque Isle Marina, increase winter storage to $1 per square foot, and make no change to other Marina rates as proposed.
Thank you. Second? Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
Just, I think this is a good idea, and I'm really happy the state changed the rules, so we weren't just victim of their assigning a rate to us. And then, we have a fund that tries to make this self-sustaining, and we can't with that, so we couldn't with that. So, this is really a good move. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Naimi?
I'd just like to thank staff for continued work at making this a self-sustaining operation.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Kevancy?
Just a question. Has it been talked about how many renters could possibly drop out if it becomes too expensive? Has that been... Is there any data, any research, any feedback we've gotten that says this is going to make or break it for me? 6% seems, I mean, it's considerable. I don't own a boat, but I'm just... I guess I'm curious what the public perception is.
Commissioner Carl, you want to address that?
Yeah, at this time, and certainly that's always something that we're evaluating, we have not seen a decrease in our slip rentals or our waiting list. So, we will continue to proceed, and, you know, our policy is to work towards making the funnel.
Commissioner Kevancy? Okay, any other commissioner? Commissioner Ryan?
Just that, as I recall, and I believe as the clerk said, that we're trying to catch up, in a sense, here from being behind for a number of years, and trying to get to a point where it is self-sustaining. It's not going to be self-sustaining as far as all the maintenance projects and things like that go, but as far as the basic operation. And I guess the fact that we don't have a roomful of people out here saying, "Why are you raising our rates?" must be a good sign that they hopefully understand why these changes are necessary.
Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Perhaps because there's no outcry means we aren't raising it enough.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Seen none at this time. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes five to zero. Showing Commissioner Stonehouse abstaining. Thank you.
Can we now, like, double his rates?
We'll now move to Agenda Number Nine, professional service for special legal counsel. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, RFPs were requested for special legal counsel services regarding updating city traffic ordinances in regard to commercial truck traffic and state and federal environmental regulations. This is due to the city attorney having a potential conflict of interest regarding the County Road 595 issue. Bids were opened on February 20, 2013, and one bid was received. The bid received was from Stewart &amp; Sheraton PLC, and the hourly rates ranged from $150 to $225 per hour based on the services asked to be provided. Fiscal effect is anticipated that sufficient funds are in the FY 1213 budget to cover these services. Recommendation, recommend a professional services agreement for special legal counsel with Stewart &amp; Sheraton PLC in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I believe Mr. Ferto wants to address this Number Nine Agenda item.
Frank Jefferto, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Item Number Nine on tonight's agenda reads "Professional Services for Special Legal Counsel" with no indication of what the item is about. People who rely on Channel 21 for the agenda would have no way of knowing. Yes, we need to keep the descriptions brief, but please at least indicate what the items are about. You've just heard the background read. The main sentence is quite a mouthful. Quote, "Request for Proposals Were Requested for Special Legal Counsel Services Regarding Updating City Traffic Ordinances in Regard to Commercial Truck Traffic and State and Federal Traffic Regulations." This is due to the city attorney having a potential conflict of interest regarding the County Road 595 issue, end of quote. No supporting documents follow the supplement in your packets. in your packets that would explain why the supposed conflict of interest would negate a regular attorney from handling the specific matter at hand. It makes no sense that there'd be a conflict because all entities would share a common goal, to route traffic in the safest possible manner. We already have a salaried attorney to handle this task, and unless you're willing to clarify a more specific reason, we cannot justify our taxpayers forfeiting up to five thousand dollars because the firm he works for happens to have a potential conflict of interest regarding County Road 595, of all perverse things. Please indicate why we cannot assign this task to our attorney to spare us what might be unnecessary expense during these tough economic times. A whole other side of the equation is how this legal firm is connected to the failed attempt to ram an allegedly illegal road down our throats. We can easily deduce that the only reason the road nonsense ever began was that filthy mine, and now you're expecting us to pay a separate attorney? When most of our residents didn't want that mine to begin with?
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Could we have just a little discussion first?
Sure. That's why I say it's whatever you wish.
The only, the main concern I have is, is kind of the broad way it's written. I'm trying to find it here on my computer. I'm just a click away. For updating city traffic ordinances, you know, that covers a lot of ground. Isn't our city attorney able to advise us on some city traffic ordinances? And I take by the shaking of his head that that means yes.
Yes, of course, I've done that too in the past.
Right, right. So, and also the fact that this is due to this city attorney having a potential conflict of interest regarding, regarding the county road 595 issue, that's really not the issue here. It's, it's a possible conflict of interest with traffic in the city of Marquette.
Well, I-
Mining-related traffic in the city of Marquette.
I didn't write it, so I can't explain it.
Okay.
But let's face it, I've told you this more than once in writing in this, in this chamber, that I have a conflict because we represent Kennebec.
Right, I understand.
And this is geared toward, as I was, understood it, that there was, they would be in, not geared toward, but they would be involved in it, and that it was best that I stay out of it. And that's the purpose of this. Now, the way it's written, I guess the city manager, whoever wrote it, could explain it, and I'm sure it's written fine. I just don't-
Well, it's just 595 is a dead issue. You know, it's not about 595, it's about traffic in the city of Marquette. And, and as I said, I guess the other part that concerns me is, you know, it's rather broadly written because, you know, I would think you'd be available to assist us if, if we were developing some traffic ordinances in the city of Marquette.
That's true.
Yeah. So, I don't know how we draw the line. I guess that's kind of where I'm, you know, for example, we've talked about a truck route in the city, irregardless of what happens with the Rio Tinto issue. Is that fair game for our city attorney to advise us on?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Commissioner Coyne?
I would like to make a motion to recommend a professional services agreement for special legal counsel with Stewart and Sheridan PLC in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Your second. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
I am familiar with this law firm and have dealt with them as an expert witness over thirty years, and they are excellent quality. I think the bottom line is, we're doing this because we wish to avoid a conflict because of what's going on with the city streets and users, and that's all users, and this would make it much simpler and cleaner.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, only that I certainly think is very important. We avoid any conflict of interest perceived or otherwise. This is a very clean way to do that. We also need to recognize that the potential difficulties we may be having, challenges or working with, is with a multinational mining company with billions and billions of dollars behind it. So, it certainly behooves us that regardless of what action we're taking and what manner we're taking it, we have the best legal advice on our side that we can to hopefully work out the most amenable agreement possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Kevancy?
The only question I have is that when I was trying to find our original agreement with Mr. Keith, it's not on file at the city, meaning his contract, and that is something that concerns me deeply because, as many people have pointed out to me, we're already paying for services, and if these were services guaranteed to us, if there was not a conflict, is there anything in the contract that says we'll have a different agreement as far as financial pay? And I, I would prefer to get that answered before putting this out, and I don't think we have that. The document wasn't found for me, and I'm not sure where it is, but I would like to see a signed document. I'm not against avoiding conflict, going with a different law firm, but I would like to see for the financial interest of the taxpayers if there's anything before approving this, and that's my only concern.
Any other commissioner? Wishing to address this agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
Well, you know, I'll support it because we do, we certainly do, do need some assistance in, in a certain area. I, I just still have the concern I expressed earlier that, that we use our own city attorney when possible on any issues revolving, regarding, you know, the street ordinances and traffic ordinances in the city of Marquette that don't bring him into conflict, because we are spending additional money to, to make that happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. City manager?
Thank you, your honor, and just for clarification, that's exactly how we intend to proceed. The five thousand dollars is really the lowest standard in the legal community for retaining services, and I would anticipate that we would come back before the commission in the event we ever had to invoke this, and seek to expend it very similarly to like what we've done with Foley Baron on Cliff's Dow, and not to exceed level with very specific tasks that would be coordinated with the commission before we would execute it.
Thank you, city manager. Anything further? Commissioner Kevancy?
So, it would be an account kind of set aside, correct? And if we need it, we use it. If not, it just goes back in the general fund?
Yes, that's correct.
I-
Okay. There's a motion out here by Commissioner Coyne, second by Commissioner Stonehouse. I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 The pose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address commission at this time?
Frank Jefferto, three, excuse me, Fred, thank you. Frank Jefferto, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. Item number nine at tonight, I'm sorry. A biographer Frederick Olmsted wrote, "Although the opportunities to plan a complex park system for a major city and the layout a large suburban community from scratch came to Olmsted by chance, there was nothing accidental about what he produced. He was not a trained planner. For Olmsted, the lack of formal education was no more a disadvantage in his planning than in his landscaping. His ability to look ahead served him well. Olmsted stated it should be well thought of that a park exercises a very different and much greater influence upon the progress of a city and its structure than any other ordinary public work. A scene in nature is made up of various parts. Each part has an individual character and its possible ideal. It is unlikely that accidents should group a number of these possible ideals in such a way that all should be harmoniously related to the other. It is evident that an attempt to accomplish this artificially is not impossible. Please account for this philosophy in the designs of Cliff's Dow site and Hartwood. But how can we, when you load your planning board and the Hartwood committee with developers and others whose vision is defined by profit and whose foresight is limited to one parcel at a time, as is true of the majority members of this elected board? Olmsted's vision led to his national recognition as an expert, although from New England he'd seen Europe, the South, and the Wild West in the eighteen sixties, seventies, and eighties. What's odd is that the principles incorporated back then haven't yet reached this board in the one hundred thirty years since, including principles that mirror recommendations that you have ignored. In the three hundred ninety regular meetings this board held from nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand twelve, I spoke at two hundred or fifty-one percent of the meetings. The formula used in determining whether to appear accounts for the agenda items as well as accumulated general comments. When eight minutes of comments amassed, I appeared regardless of the agenda. Nowadays, only six minutes needs to be amassed. The result is my attending a higher percentage of meetings, filling in the forty-nine percent previously unattended. The math indicates that you'll hear more opinions than ever, because from now on I'll speak on secondary items at the extra meetings that otherwise have not attended those meetings solely for. Plus, you'll now hear up to twelve minutes of general comment per month instead of the previous eight. This is what happens when four dishonest members contrive a dishonest scheme for dishonest reasons. You all underwent that nonsense to achieve zilch, other than the run me to City Hall more often and the steal two minutes from those who had no bearing whatsoever on your deceitful ploy. You committed the classic mistake of providing your enemy an easy out, like on land use issues. Your unwillingness to thoroughly analyze a situation blew your cause, amounting to an unmistakable lack of vision. As a result, I'll see you the next time I accumulate six minutes of comment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public comment and start with, for Commissioner comment, with Commissioner Neme.
Thank you, your honor. I guess, two minor things. One, I'd like to thank our public works crews. They've done a yeoman's task in the last number of days. And secondly, I was wondering if the city command manager might give us an update on the lot split ordinance issue that's been, that's been bandied about.
Thank you. Actually, following the last meeting, of course, we provided a statement of what had been going on. The action passed to our CFO, our community development team, and the city attorney to work, and invite either the, maybe perhaps first the city attorney and then the CFO to provide an update.
Yeah, since the last meeting, I put together an ordinance, and it's being reviewed by staff. I anticipate it'll be, you know, it's got to go through a public hearing, so the, the anticipation was it would be set for a public hearing. On the, the notice would be on the eleventh, and then the twenty-fifth of March, it would be enacted upon by the commission. But I mean, that's just the process it has to go through. I had a conversation with Mr. Cam Bensy, and I told him that same thing last week, and that is, that is where it is. The ordinance is done from my side. Sure, the staff is going to have some questions, maybe some comments, some changes. That's fine. That's how the process works. The one thing I think you need to understand, if we adopt a lot-splitting ordinance, that means, that doesn't mean that all lot splits are going to be approved. There's a process. I mean, a lot of this is platted property, and there may not be a recommendation coming to this commission to approve a split just because we have an ordinance. That's not the purpose of it, is to allow it, if it's something that should be done.
I guess I really have nothing to add. I agree with Ryan. It's something we've been working on, staff has been working on. I've provided a couple of reports on the progress, and no apologies for it taking so long, but this is something that you don't, you just don't want to cut and paste from another community because there are issues that we need to look at, so.
Gary, while you're there, would you mind speaking a little bit to moving a boundary line versus actually subdividing a piece of property?
Oh, you're putting me on the spot now. I was actually trying to learn that this morning, but according to the city assessor, because we did have another issue come up besides a lot split, was a boundary line adjustment, and there was some confusion as to if the boundary line adjustment actually needs to be part of this ordinance, and we did have a meeting this morning, and we determined that it does need to be a part of that. So, that's kind of two separate issues, but kind of tied together with this ordinance. But we are looking at the ordinance, and our goal is to have it ready to have a public hearing set at the next commission meeting, so the last meeting in March, hopefully it'll be addressed at that time.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Just a second. City attorney? Commissioner Coyne want to know if he could ask him a question? He says yes.
I want to ask the three of them a question, in follow-up to Bob's question. When the ordinance, say the ordinance is approved by the last meeting in March, then if I'm a property owner, if I'm the guy who owns the Lutheran church on Radisson, what timeframe am I looking at to have the process go through, to have it approved or disapproved? How long is that going to take? That's what he would probably want to know.
Well, once the effective date of the ordinance, and, and the city clerk would know that better than I, if it's immediate or ten days or whatever, then you get an application from, from the clerk's office or planning. You fill it out, and it goes through the steps. I mean, I don't know-
Okay, well-
What are the steps?
Someone has to know what the steps are, and does that take a week or a month?
It'll be spelled out in the ordinance. It'll be spelled out in the ordinance, and I don't know what the steps are. I know if not all of them, some of them have to go to the planning commission by law before they get to you.
So, it's not, that helps.
Right.
And that's not going to be immediate?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I ask one follow-up too then, your honor?
Yeah.
I think it would just be helpful for people if they knew what was at the basis of what it is we're talking about. You know, the basis of, of lot splitting. What, what are the issues here?
Well, generally, you can't split a platted lot. It's already been platted. The lots have been laid out. There isn't, there is some allowance in the law to do that under certain circumstances, especially if there's an adjacent landowner who wants to pick up, pick up a piece of land, but you have other situations where it's not an adjacent landowner, it's just someone wants to buy a part of a, of a lot, and that's where you get into your lot-splitting ordinance.
And this is somewhat driven by state law as well, isn't it?
Yeah, it's all set forth in the Land Division Act.
Right.
And it allows the cities to have an ordinance. I think why it's come up now rather than the past is, I think the city has allowed lot splits probably, or boundary line adjustments from time to time, without an ordinance, but I think it's pretty clear, at least to the assessor now, that we really do have to have an ordinance if she's going to approve these, and, you know, she just won't, and I'm not disagreeing with her. I think that's probably the right thing to do, but that's why it's come up now as opposed to, you know, in the past where this has been done, and I think a lot of people who are coming up here and saying, "This has been done before. Why aren't you just allowing me to do it?" Well, the assessor's concluded that we needed an ordinance. I agree with her, and we prepared one.
Thank you. Anything further you need from our CFO? Commissioner Neme, you still have the floor?
No, they've satisfied my, my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kevancy?
I'll throw my two cents in on the conversation, and that is just that I look at a lot-splitting ordinance as a vehicle to either achieve a lot split or not. I mean, it still comes down to, is it legal, is it not? What can be done, what can't. But without that vehicle, the car doesn't go. People sit, they get frustrated. So, I'm pleased to hear that it is in motion now, because from my understanding, what I was getting back is that it's complex. Well, if I go to a resident and say it's just complex, they're not going to be happy. I'm not satisfied with that. To know that it just needed to be worked on a little and that we're there, I'm satisfied. So, I'd like to thank staff for that. The traffic study, Front Street, I think we are dealing with pedestrian safety. It's going to take a while, but I think all of us as commissioners have identified some things we'd like to look at in the, in the coming year, and so, we'll get there with that. The other thing I just want to bring up briefly, we've had a lot of emails about snowy- The other thing I just want to bring up briefly, we've had a lot of emails about snow removal, and I think there's a lot of confusion with downtown business owners, residents, city residents that are just mad it's taken so long. We did get quite a bit of snow, I know my street is one of the last to get plowed usually with all the college cars that sit on it, but I don't know if staff would be willing to, I mean, I guess, tell us what the boundaries are, if we are still plowing all city sidewalks, downtown, Third Street, or if some of that has been given up to the DDA. I'm not quite certain, I remember exactly who's doing what, but I know the process is to do the major arterial roads, the roads that, you know, provide the most use for safety, you know, then probably our parking lots, and then our sidewalks, but I don't know if staff is prepared to do that, but I think as a reminder, it'd be good to just put that out to the public again.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think rather than try to wing it this evening, I'm going to ask the superintendent to prepare a very specific explanation, and we'll forward it to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kevansy? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I'd just like to thank Lynn Lasko and the good folks at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I thought that was really a terrific briefing they gave us, and, you know, very thoughtful, and certainly a group that's working very hard to get a lot of things done. Other than that, nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
I'll just kind of reiterate something I said during or after that presentation, the fact that the city of Marquette has not received certain recognition because we don't provide recreational programming. And I do feel very strongly that when I said that I think we've got something better than the city could provide, that's not a reflection on the city, it's really a statement about the kind of volunteer effort we have in this community that gets the job done. We have just outstanding recreation programs in our community, whether they be youth sports or the Kamenon Trail Network, and you go right down the line, there are so many things that are put together by so many volunteers. But yet, the city does have a role to play in this, and I think we do. Not many cities have an arena like Lakeview Arena where people can use it, where kids can skate, where adults can skate. Not many people have the kind of parks we have, the bike trails we have, the paved trails, you know, I'm proud of what Marquette has, and I think it really works because we have so many volunteers that take those facilities and put them to work. So, I think, you know, whether or not we get recognized for that is really not important. The real fact is, we do some outstanding things here because of so many wonderful volunteers.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a couple of things. I had lunch downtown today, and I was walking across South Front Street from north to south, or east to west, and felt like I was going to get killed. I mean, people were going 40 miles an hour, you know, to make the traffic light, and it was slippery, and I kind of slipped on the sidewalk, and it is very dangerous, and it's a real problem, and it does not make downtown a very friendly place. So, I'm glad I didn't get killed. Thank you. The other is an issue that was in the paper tonight about a hearing about the dust thing for Rio Tinto, and I think we ought to have a representative there from the city, because when they start transporting the ore, I think dust may be an issue for all the residents along the Big Bay Road and the citizens in Marquette. So, I think we ought to have some input there to keep an eye on how that's going. And I have a request, and I would hope the other commissioners would support me in this, to at a later date, preferably the next meeting, to put on the agenda a opinion from the city attorney regarding the status of the funds in the Marquette County Community Foundation, which amount to $41,000. And my concern is that we need an opinion as to particularly how to develop a plan or policy to handle that money so as to give the city control of it, rather than have others who perhaps don't even live in the city, or advisory committees appropriating money from it. I just don't think that's appropriate anymore, I mean, and I think it should be along the same lines as when a commissioner goes to a trip and has a hotel room, that person is reimbursed, but that has to be approved by the city, and I don't see any reason that should be any different. And I really am very, very uncomfortable without the commission on behalf of the city controlling that money rather than how it's being done now. And I would hope that at another, at another meeting, we could have an agenda item where that could be addressed and clarified to then eliminate all this problem we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. At this time, I wanted to thank UP 200 President Pat Toriano, volunteer Anna Sanford, and all the volunteers. There was several thousand involved with the UP 200 going all the way to Grand Marais and back, so anyways, the people were so excited lining up Friday evening and watching the dogs getting all excited, ready to take off, and what an excellent, excellent community event this was. It just, the sponsors and fans, the mushers, the dogs, everything was excellent, the weather was perfect for the mushers and not so perfect for the fans, but anyways, it was a very successful event, and we're really looking forward to 2014. Thank you to everybody involved with the UP 200, excellent work. And also kudos to the DPW on plowing other streets and ice control. A lot of times, people really don't think their streets get plowed quick enough, or they should be the first street, but all you have to do is leave the city of Marquette and travel into some of the townships two or three days later, and the people's driveways are clean, but the roads aren't, and there's still four, five, six inches of snow on those roads. So, sometimes it doesn't hurt to take a ride outside the city to really see how fortunate we are to have our streets cleared as quickly as they are, ice controlled, and also parking wreck on keeping a bike path cleared of the snow for the walkers, that's one of the priorities. If that bike path isn't cleared, we hear about it pretty quick, you know, and a lot of them aren't complaining that the streets weren't plowed first, they're complaining that the bike path wasn't cleared for them. So, you walkers, I know you appreciate the parking wreck doing that, and also at parking wreck, the great job of keeping the outdoor ice rinks in great shape, you should see the people using them after school, evenings, at nighttime, under the lights, large groups of people either skating or playing hockey, so thank you to all those people involved with keeping the ice rinks in good shape. And water department, they're going steady, keeping the fire hydrants clear of snow, they'll just get done shoveling around it, and it won't be but the next day the city plows are coming by again, cleaning the streets, and that's where the snow goes, right towards the fire hydrant. So, I'd ask city residents, you know, if any of yous have a hydrant in your area, please help the water department and the market fire department by keeping the hydrants clean in your area, because if those hydrants are covered with snow and there's emergency house fire in your neighborhood, and the fire department has to shovel out just to get the hose hooked up to it, that is essential time that they would lose. So, just out of courtesy and public safety and health, it'd be nice if you keep that in mind when you're cleaning your driveways and sidewalks, look around your neighborhood and make sure that the fire hydrants are kind of clear so the fire department can get to them immediately. Thank you for doing that. And kudos to the DDA and the UP 200 people for working that Saturday with the Rail Jam, what an excellent group of athletes that were showing the best of the best in the huge crowds that were there to watch them. I mean, these people are great athletes to do what they're going, or what they had been doing, but 2014 is also going to be much better than 2013, because it sounds like they got bigger plans for 2014 and more participants, which I can't divulge at this time, we'll let the organizers put all that out in front of you. So, anyways, thank you, everybody, the DDA Director Mona Lang and her staff, all the volunteers, the UP 200, this was an excellent community event that kept many, many people in the city of Marquette and Marquette County for extra days. So, thank you, and with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for his comment.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you again to the commission for all of the support this evening. I just wanted to note that the next community office hours is March 13th from 10 to 12 at Peter White Public Library in the community conference room, and we'll look forward to visits from any residents who care to stop by and share how they believe we can make the city better.
Thank you, city manager, Bill Fiedler, with that, we're adjourned.